I'd like to call the Thursday, June 14, 2018, special meeting, public work session to order at this time. Would you please stand for a moment of silence? Amen. At this time Reverend Fleming, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time Reverend Fleming, would you please read the mission?
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Ms. Allen.
Present.
Ms. Atkinson.
Here.
Reverend Fleming.
Present.
Mrs. Heinz.
Present.
Mr. Lamb.
Present.
Reverend Patillo.
Present.
Dr. Whitaker.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Parent.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. At this time you have had a copy of the agenda. Your motion has moved the agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made and second, the agenda be approved. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item is, Ms. Williams, if you will please put us into closed session.
I move that the board enter to a closed meeting on the provisions of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the following purpose: consideration of a student disciplinary matter as permitted under subsection 8.2.
Motion's been read, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Personnel.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, sir, we need personnel as well.
Well, it's not on here, but consider personnel matters.
I remove the second. I remove my second.
Yes, you need to.
Motion to amend.
Say it a little louder.
A motion.
Motion to amend.
Second.
So, I'm seeing the motion, there's a motion on the floor amended to add closed session on the grounds of discussion of personnel matters, which I believe arises under A2, under A2 of the same code provision.
Can you give a second? Will you Sarah second?
It was amended.
Sarah second.
It was a second. Now, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Heinz.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay. The board is officially in closed session. Board members, we have a procedural item we need to take care of that I overlooked under, on our agenda. We need to approve this evening of the superintendent's transaction report, and I recommend that we amend the agenda right under the consideration of expulsion case. Then 3.3 would be the approval of the superintendent's transaction report, and then each of those items would be increased.
Move to move the agendas as stated by the chair.
Thank you. No second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Heinz.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
All right, 3.2, roll call vote. Consideration of expulsion discipline case number 2017-18/43. The recommendation is expulsion.
Move for approval.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Heinz.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
No.
Dr. Whitaker.
Hello.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Seven yes votes, two no, it passes.
Right. Student is expelled. The next item is the superintendent's transaction report.
Move for approval.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Second. Any discussion concerning the superintendent's transaction report? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Heinz.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item is consideration of authorization of signatures in the absence of the superintendent 2018-19. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Motion's been made. Second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Reverend Patillo.
Ah, yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Next item is the discussion of the 2018 dual enrollment annual report, and I think, board members, you have a copy, and Dr. Bracy, I think you're going to introduce.
Yes. At this time, Mr. Craig Hill is going to give the report on our dual enrollment program. Thank you, Dr. Bracy. Chairman, chairman, parents, school board members, Dr. Bracy, it's my pleasure tonight to bring to you the report for the dual enrollment program. If you could, for a moment, let's all imagine if we were in a school system that offered our ninth through 12th graders an opportunity for free tuition, free or reduced tuition, free transportation, free textbooks while they gain college credits. Think about that for a moment. Just imagine that. They're getting free tuition, they're getting free transportation and textbooks and attending college for their ninth and 12th grades. A chance to graduate from high school with an associate's degree, a certificate, and plenty of credits to go into their resume. Guess what? You don't have to imagine it because you are part of that school system. Portsmouth Public Schools offers that system. And this report's going to show you some things that we've done this year and some of the positive things I think you're going to be proud of. One of our first college scholars said, "Do it. There's no better opportunity to see college is where you want to be, and it benefits you entirely. Get credits, experience, and make individual decisions of your own." One tip, go on out like a child. You will not be seen as funny or cool, but annoying and treated like a child. TCC is to learn, not play. That sums it up pretty much. And those students go over there with the expectations that they're going to receive, and they do not fail us. They earn credits, they go over there and act the way they're supposed to, and you should be proud of them, because we really are. Moving forward, the dual enrollment overview, basically, this is our 13th year. We had 211 students in our first college program. If you remember back in 2000, I believe it was six, we had 19 students. So that program has grown and got so much more than we ever really expected, to be honest. We have 21, 211, I'm sorry, first college students, 14 and 81 transferable courses, 60 different dual enrollment courses taken. We have students simultaneously earning a college credits credential certificate associate's degree while completing high school graduation requirements. And we've expanded career pathways into certificates and associate's degrees. So that's the things that we have done these last couple of years. You can also see that the enrollment courses that are taken, there are two slides that you have in your packet there. Look at all the courses that were now offered in the past. There were just a few courses that TCC provided. Now they've got over 60 courses that were taken. An opportunity for students to really get a prior education while they're at first college or in early college. The race in gender of first college scholars, basically, has stayed the same. As you can see there, last year with Isaac Norton, we had like three black males. This year we increased that, so we were glad about that. But then church went down a little bit. So those numbers just kind of rotate throughout the years. But it's been a pretty standard demographic that has evolved. The graph, if you notice also, we have more females in the program, so it just says that the females are taking more advantage of it than males. But the demographics again are basically pretty even. The achievement, you notice on the achievements, this time we changed it up. In the past, we've always just did first college. But this program has expanded so much with the superintendent's vision with early college. We are now just going to out the seams, if you think about it. Look at all of the combined credit totals over there, of course, of attempted and transferred this year. That is including all the dual enrollments, that CTE, early college, and first college, where in years 16 and 17, we only did first college. We'll show you that. If you notice the attempted and transferable, there's a difference. A big part of that is the SDV class. That is a course that is required from TCC, is a one-credit course that is not transferred to any college, so they have to do that. That's a study skill, time management type of course, so we require them to take that. But it's not transferable, so that's why you see the difference. So really, it's not too much of a difference from the courses they take and transfer.
When you say it's not transfer, you mean they don't get dual credit?
That's right. You don't get dual credit, thank you.
You have to take the course.
Yes, the course is required by TCC. And by the way, I want to introduce Ms. Katina Barnes, who is the coordinator for our dual enrollment academies at TCC and a phenomenal partner for us in helping us to get these programs up and running. And so TCC has been wonderful in forming this partnership, which is why we've expanded our course offerings, and we are now able to service more students. And students can access dual enrollment at every grade level now. Nine, 10, 11, and 12, because I think, Ms. Heinz, you called me yesterday about a parent who wanted, and I mean, shut up. A parent who wanted her child to get in in 11th grade. And there was a time we couldn't do that. We now have an access point for 11th grade. And if this is a student who's so motivated, they could still even graduate with an associate's degree. The key is that we want students to graduate with those dual, with a diploma and a degree. How many we have this year, Ms. Barnes? We had first college or... Students graduating with the associate's and a diploma.
We actually had three individuals graduating with an associate's degree to come church there and work for Norton.
Oh, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
We use a lot of acronyms.
Yes.
Just because I'm curious.
SDV.
What is that?
It's the Student Development Course.
Right.
Student Development V.
Yes, it helps them with the study skills, time management, like I was saying.
What is the V?
Develop.
Oh. TV, I've got you.
College success.
I'm just curious.
It really is kind of a college integration course to help students understand what the expectations are, to teach them how to study, so that they understand, you know, how college differs from high school. And so it's a one-hour course that they take just to integrate them into the college curriculum.
And we were looking at a call from that earlier.
I was getting ready to go, I was telling this.
Oh, first year, that's the first year that they take.
There you go. I'm moving on here with the academic status for first college division. You get a good standing of 2.0 or higher. It's many students that we had there. GPA is also showing you there for 2018. There was some growth there with 2.0 and higher. There's a little bit of growth there with the warning kind of stayed the same. So everything is basically consistent. And also, we noticed that the same with the CTE courses that were offered over there for dual enrollment was a 2.6 average across the board. So our CTE students are doing basically the same as our first college or early college far as the average. Because if you look up there, it says 2.0 to 2.99, where most of our students are falling. So we're right there. Good standing here, yes.
For students on academic probation, what is the process to try to actually, when they're actually in a warning status, is there any type of programming or something that kind of catch them before they actually go to probation?
Yes, ma'am. What we do over there, we watch them, we monitor them, obviously, with the midterm grades and throughout. We have, through the SDV, we have the real talk sessions. Those are sessions that the students go and participate in, and helps them with a lot of different topics far as grades, study skills, and those things. And then Ms. Barnes also has the listening labs over there that are mandatory for our students to come to. Anyone that is enrolled in the program has to do that. Unfortunately, of some of those students, things happen and they stop coming or different things come up. But we do, we counsel them, everyone of them, we let them know about the labs over there. There's all kinds of resources that TCC provides.
We also had a meeting, a joint meeting with Dr. Woodhouse and Ms. Barnes and the TCC support staff and our high school principals and middle school principals, and we talk about those things. And one of the things that we want to focus on is how can we help those students who are on academic probation or being warned, but also understanding that this is the nature of the students that we're, there are many students who go because they're self-motivated. But we also have students who go simply because mom or dad said, "I got to go take this class." And so we're looking into the reasons that students aren't passing. And most of the time it's because these students are not motivated. They're not coming to class. Dr. Woodhouse, you know, talking about how they've had issues with students who come on campus, and they want to hang out, and they don't want to go to class, and they want to pretend that they're a college student, so it's just a matter. And they do monitor them very closely. They have all kinds of counseling. They have to check in every day. So if they're not showing up for class, you know, she was saying, for instance, in one class, the teacher literally went to the student center and got the student because they were not showing up for class. So, you know, we're looking for ways to ensure that students are successful, but it is college, and that's the thing that we're emphasizing to parents, you know. This is a college course, and the expectations are different. And so they do have to go to class, and they do have to do the work.
Mr. Lamb.
And hence, because of those reasons, just say, that's where I'm kind of seeing the influx of the numbers between 16 and 18 in a couple of those categories.
One more question.
Yes.
Is there, has there been any talk about removing students from the program if they're not successful?
Do you want to ask that, Ms. Barnes?
We have talked about that. As of right now, when a first college student comes over, we cannot remove them. We cannot withdraw them from their courses. They can choose to not come, and the result is a failed grade. We would love to discuss, how can we prevent that? Can they be withdrawn? As of right now, I think that's a PPS requirement. But we might want to look at withdrawing them so that it's not hurt their GPA as it does now. So I'd love to entertain that more.
And that's something we can...
More panel vote.
Ms. Atkinson.
And to add to that, our students pay, some of our students pay into the program, some do not. And what we know, when you don't invest in something that you're beginning, you may not have full investment to be able to consider. If a student fails a course, maybe they pay it back. That may be a discussion.
Well, and can I add on?
I think Ms. Atkinson had her end.
Well, and the reason I ask is if we're going to have more juniors coming over, then we're looking at at least two semesters where you're on academic probation. Then maybe if you can't, if you're struggling, if you're not finding success, let me use the correct terms here. If you're not finding success after two semesters, then maybe there's another placement where you can find some success for.
Now, when you're only over the BCCS dual enrollment policy, if a student falls under a 1.5 GPA, then they automatically are withdrawn from the program. So.
Okay. Thank you.
My concern is that we've dropped from, I mean, actually 10 students from 17 to this year. You've actually increased 10 students? It may not be for everybody. And there's reasons, I mean, no, we're not comparing apples with apples because of students, but that kind of alarms me that we have that many students that are... Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Stilwell.
Ms. Atkinson.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Atkinson.
And that was just to piggyback off of what Sarah said. She kind of brought up what I said, and I'm looking at the feedback, and the students are saying allow students to drop classes if absolutely necessary. And I feel like they should be able to, because maybe they took on more than they can handle. And for them to be in that situation and can't get out, it only makes it worse. And also, I think you had mentioned mandatory events. The students were saying that they have to go to mandatory events, but it's the same time as their class schedule. So is there a way to fix that?
She rotated the times, the different times, so, you know, that shouldn't have been an issue.
Okay. So that's changed?
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead, Ms. Stilwell.
The next one here is about the early college division. We've expanded, you know, just first college, in the last two years, we've expanded to the first college. The students up here, you notice, is 11 is part of the first cohort, or the 1A. In that cohort, actually, it was 15 students in the beginning, but three of them graduated with an associate's degree this year that Dr. Wim was speaking about a while ago. And then one of them also graduated this year with about 50-some credits. So four of those students, and we still have 11 left in that early college program. And that's why we're breaking it out a little bit for you. Eventually, you'll want to take this umbrella of dual enrollment branding, because enrollings are big. Kind of showing you there how many students were taken, and also a little bit of the academics there. And then at the bottom there, you get the 2018 Governors winners, and those were the three that received the associate's degree. Isn't that something, they received their associate's degree in A and graduation? Where are they going? Will they go into all of the, I'm sorry.
I have a question. Do we have a curriculum guide that will show a student how to graduate with the associate's degree?
Yes.
Okay.
Where our graduates are going, basically, the same university. But I wanted to add, if you noticed, that we added all the apprenticeships up there. They go over to Norfolk Naval, they want to, because that should be a celebration, too. We always have these, I was at a Lefco meeting recently. You have these nice signing days for colleges. Why not have signing days for apprenticeships?
That's huge. Yes, it is.
So it should be included in our graduation. So quite a few of these kids went over to the shipyard and are signed up for the apprenticeship through our welding program, which I'll take a little more. There we go, nevermind. Thanks, Dean. Definitely 100% do it. This is from one of our first college scholars. High school is completely different than college. I'm so glad I got the field support, they're going to a larger four-year college. We hear that so often. And even the ones that didn't do as well, and maybe their grades were tonight would be really light, they come back and tell us the experience they gained was priceless. They were able to take that experience on to wherever they went, and they used it. They realized about procrastination, they realize about time management and all of those things. So it is a very good learning curve for them, whether their grades show it, you know, or not. Expanding career pathways into certificates and associate's degree. Dr. Wim mentioned this a few slides back. This is one of the things that we did this year, career studies, certificate in maritime welding, pathways, also in maritime technologies. And then there's your associate's degrees, as you were mentioning. If you notice, there's an entry level in the ninth, 10th, and 11th grade entry levels. Ms. Barnes has been working on that. I've spent kind of remaining focused all year to make sure that we can allow students to enter at a new grade level. It's just like getting on the interstate, whether you get on Crawford or Hickory, you can now get on, you can come over there and be part of the first college or early college in being credits. So it's open to access.
Ms. Atkinson.
Maybe this is for Dr. Bracy. Do we have an open house where students can see all of this? Where they can come out, their...
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, we do. We actually have an event coming up this Saturday for students to come out to that TCC is...
It's actually June 23rd, from 9:00 to 12:00, it's our record, open house for the college. But we have added a dual enrollment information session. And those, the flyers have gone out to all the middle schools, high schools. I dropped some off throughout in the community. And it's also on the Portsmouth Public, no, Portsmouth City email officially.
Good.
And just, do you feel like we need to do another refresher, maybe at the beginning of the school year, maybe midsemester to kind of...
It's funny you say that. We also have one in December when we had the students, but we're looking at now doing something in August.
Right.
And grab all the dual enrollment students, and they're aware of whether they're CTE, first college, early college, or whatever the case may be. Moving forward here, and I don't want to get too much in this, I know we're running a little late here, but I just wanted you to see the courses and what Dr. Wim was saying. This kind of makes up, this is all welding certificate. And let's do the highlight that, we had two students that received the welding certificate this year, and that's the first ever. And I don't want to show my age, but I remember back when we were with the OTCC over in Suffolk, and we were bussing kids over there for welding class, and then we just grew, and now we offer this to these kids with the certificate. So we just really expanded. And what does that look like, you ask? That's what it looks like. Those are some of the students that were part of it. They went over to a pre-apprenticeship event where they were interviewed and actually hired on the spot. So that's some of our students in the discrepancy.
We need to spotlight them.
Oh, spotlight, okay.
Yes. Put it on the website and...
We are, we've talked with Ms. Barnes. Talking about that.
Moving forward, I'm just going to kind of push through, you have them, but just look at the magnitude of the courses that are being offered so these students can get an associate's degree. The partnership that we have, it just shows so much. The courses they take over at the high school and then over the college, that you can see how it all comes together, all these courses. A lot of them, they ask, "What are the pathways, where are they gaining?" These are your pathways.
This speaks to Dr. Whitaker's question about the pathway. And so Ms. Barnes was very instrumental in working with our staff to determine what it would look like for students who entered in ninth grade, and this is the pathway that they want to, an associate's degree in general studies, this is what they're going to have to take. We also identify prerequisite courses that students will need. So at the very top, you see that these students must have completed Algebra I, Geometry Spanish I, or another high school credit. And then these are the courses that they would proceed in to get their associate's degree. So it's pretty well laid out.
How are they getting this information?
They get it through their counselors.
Is it really, is it being pushed?
Well, I will say this, we had this discussion in our meeting. It has come to our attention that some people feel that they are not getting the information. So we're exploring ways to make sure that parents and students get this information. That's a conversation we had with TCC the other day, and it's a conversation we're having with ourselves, within our own school division. What we're also doing is changing the mindset, because part of the confusion has been that students have to be honor students to access dual enrollment. That is not the case. This program, these programs are available to all students who meet the qualifications. And you don't have to be a straight A student, you don't have to be a three point five student. If you can, if you can pass, if you have the prerequisites, and you can, you know, pass the, sometimes the entry test.
But you've got to have a two point O.
You do, yes. But what we're finding is that we want to raise the rigor for students, and we want to give students the opportunity. Because if you allow them to access these programs, they will rise to the occasion. And we're seeing that in the growth in the numbers that we have. You know, our goal is to increase the number of associate degrees, but at the same time, even if we have students who just take one or two classes, that speaks a lot toward their ability to see what they can do. Because we have many students who are first-time college students. And for them, it's the reality of knowing that they can take a college class, and that they can pass it. And that will encourage them to go to that four-year university.
So if I'm understanding correctly, too, even though the numbers that we had seen, the fluctuation with some of this, even though this is something relatively new, but yet, at the same time, you're saying that we're seeing an increase in associates.
Oh, absolutely.
So even though some of these numbers are troubling, but at the same time, you're having an increase of students that aren't getting associates.
Well, the cohort one A, we start out with fifteen, there's eleven in there. We now have a cohort, one is coming out, there's thirty students that started this month, so that's grown. And then we have another cohort that's going to be coming out in July. So this is starting to.
And we're also running summer programs for these students, for instance. They will come in summer, take the SDV course, the one-hour course, and we're paying for them to basically take this course. And that gives them exposure during the summer before they get to high school. And then they hit high school, and they're ready to take these courses. So understand that this level of these programs has not been available up until this year. This is something, after Dr. Bracy took us down Halifax, North Carolina, to the early college program there, Dr. Woodhouse worked with our team to develop these kinds of programs, because no other community college, from what she explained to us, in Virginia is doing this. So Portsmouth is on the cutting edge, because other school divisions are having kids take dual enrollment, but not at ninth grade. So we're on the cutting edge with this, and that's largely because TCC has worked really hard with us to create these pathways for our students.
It goes back to that analogy, we're doing it now.
Let me ask you, I thought, I thought that, and I can't find it, but I thought that automotive was being.
It's still.
Well, I don't see, I don't see.
The very first course, is it up there, or the very first one? Automotive, it's only one student was going over there.
Oh, I don't see it, but. Okay, that's what I think. Yes. Sorry.
That's okay. Is that, I'm not trying to micromanage, but it would seem as though we would need someone in each high school who is designated to do this, yeah.
That would be a beautiful thing. What we would like in each high school is a career counselor who can work specifically with students. That is a budget item. But at this point, we do have a head counselor, a lead counselor who takes, you know, this on as one area, a focus, and manages it. So we're working with the personnel that we have right now, but it would be really nice if we did have that.
Thank you, Chair. Do we still do like a program of studies where we type up, you know, what is this course and what is this course? And it's found on the website? I mean, I would think for parents to call board members and say, how do I get my child into dual enrollment? Especially when this child has been a stellar AP student in the first year of high school. And for a counselor to say, well, no, that's not necessarily the case, that's disheartening. When, when we at this table, and I can say we at this table because I jumped into this conversation the minute I got here, we've worked and we've talked about this. I mean, this is, this is website, this is, put a tab on your website that says early college. This is something, I remember when I enrolled in my history program at Old Dominion, I printed out my Pre-Wacs and they hung on the refrigerator. You know, and so, I mean, I basically went through, okay, I've got this one, I've got this one, so I knew where I was, you know, it's that blueprint. And sometimes parents just need the blueprint so they can go and correct information, or ask the correct questions, you know. So I love that it's all here. My concern, like Dr. Whitaker, is how are we getting it out to people? And why do we still have people saying no? That's my concern. That's my issue.
We're trying to address that, obviously, getting it out as always.
And I thank both of you for your help.
And I think it goes back to the point of changing the mindset and our culture around the way we allow students to access programs. And we are trained, we're trying to get our staff on board with the understanding that we do not create barriers for success. Which is why honors courses are open to all students in middle school. They're open to all students in high school. And then we find ways to help students become successful in those courses. So there is, you know, and it's not just us. I mean, in general, in education, we want to let people know that even though this is a higher-level course, you can be successful at it. And once they see, and so what we're seeing now is the influx of people, because word of mouth is, you know, the best way to get it out. And kids are taking these classes, and they're experiencing success, and parents are hearing about it, and they want to be a part of this. And that's what we want, you know, we want kids in these programs.
This first college was kind of like the Wright Brothers.
So we do need to do a better, yeah. We need to do a better job of publicizing.
Ms. Williams?
Uh, thank you, Chair, and I agree with everything everyone has said, but I also think that we need an action plan and a timeline of how we can get the tab on the website for the parents. And I know we keep saying we're going to do it, and we're getting it out there, but people don't know. If the parent called the board member, and she, you know, we don't have a resource that we can say, look at our school website, and you'll find the information there. So I would like for Dr. Bracy to bring back the information of when we can expect this to be done operational, so the public can see. Because I think, it's such a great program. I mean, we really need to get it out there as much as possible.
We already have the documents, so it's not something that I need to come back and tell you that we need to plan to do. It's just a matter of getting it done, we can get that done.
I love that you have the documents. I still want you to tell me when this up there that we can see it. Because I got a lot of stuff.
What I'm saying, it'll be done, it's going to be done. It's nothing we have to plan to tell you when we're going to have it done. It's a matter of making it happen. We have the information, so we just. Put the tab and get it up there.
Okay, wonderful.
So tomorrow, when I look at it.
That's what I'm asking.
Ms. Newsome is back there twiddling teeth. Ms. Akerson?
And to piggyback off of everything, with the open house, maybe I was misunderstood, not just the open house with TCC, but an open house in all our schools, to where it's the first college dual enrollment, access college, the apprentice programs.
AP classes.
Everything.
Yeah, it's not, we don't, yeah, we don't have that yet, just for our schools outside of TCC. And also, we need to start this open house in the eighth grade. So if you're in the eighth grade, you'll be aware of these courses as well. And also, when we do put it on the website, Dr. Bracy, can we send out a robocall and say, hey, first college, information is on the site as well?
And Ms. Barnes goes out to the schools and.
The schools do invite me out all over. I do attend PTA meetings, I attend, whenever the schools have an evening for parents, I am there. So I'm kind of included in other bits, but I don't think there's a separate dual enrollment.
Right. That's where I'm hitting that.
But I do go to, I do go to events at the schools to present the opportunities.
Good. Dr. Wynn, one question I want to ask you. In high school, not dual, not the TCC, how many courses do we offer AP? Like AP, do we offer AP Biology, English? How many AP courses do we offer?
I'm going to have to get back with you on a definite number, but I know that we offer two sciences. There's a math AP course and three science.
Yeah, we brought chemistry on.
Chemistry, and biology. And biology.
Now, they.
Government.
History.
History.
US History.
And English.
Now, when the students are enrolled in these classes, they can take the AP course, I mean, the test, and if they score, I think, what, a three?
It varies by university.
It depends on.
Usually three, four, five.
Three, four, five.
Because, now, do we pay for that, or does a student have to pay for that?
We pay.
We cover the cost of AP.
We cover that, that's wonderful. That's another secret that we don't advertise, is that we've got AP classes, and students can take the exam, and they can get college credit.
Advanced placement, that's correct, we do, we offer those.
And we pay for it.
We pay for the test.
The test.
Right.
That is awesome. All right.
All right, we're just going to move on. There was the tenth grade, and I'm just going to click through, and we basically discussed all of these pathways. And I want to adhere to the accomplishments, that's always good here. You know, a lot of these good things you never hear about. And this is like you said, three students graduated from associate's degree. We had an outstanding year for college enrollment. Two CTE welding pathway students graduated from maritime welding certificate and were hired at the pre-apprenticeship, they were offered jobs. We have six CTE welding students that earned a welding certification. That's phenomenal, a big thing, so they've earned animal certificates over there, but they're earning certifications. Welding students placed into apprenticeship programs, the pre-apprenticeship partnership, that's a great partnership. They provided scholarships to help pay for the welding classes, they helped pay for boots and books for our students. And then we had the big pre-apprenticeship interviews where students were hired on the spot. So that's, that's all four area school systems, along with all the shipyards around the areas involved in this event. Opportunities for students to enter first college, the ninth, tenth, eleventh grade, and then finally, forty first college students earned President's Honor Roll, and twenty-nine students earned one B's list, and that's the most we've ever had on either one. So those were all accomplishments. And finally, I would like to thank the school board for the opportunity to continue to offer first college, early college, to realize what a golden nugget we have here in Portsmouth, to support that. And also to Dr. Bracy for the vision of starting this and opening it up to early college, where we were just kind of sitting with the first college and only seniors. Now look at this thing, this thing is going to run through all the grade levels. Our partners over at TCC, the provost and Ms. Barnes, we work together daily on this, and it's a feather in both, you know, hats, so to speak. And then also, Dr. Wynn, who gives me the opportunity and is always there to support me anything I need. And then the high school principals and guidance counselors, and Dr. Shepherd for guidance group, we really appreciate that. But lastly, Ms. Harold, my associate, if I didn't mention her name, I'd really pay for that.
I want to say that the Beasley Foundation has been a great benefactor, because it's one of the reasons that we can afford to offer these courses to students for free, and provide transportation, and it has been just a phenomenal opportunity for us to be able to give this back to our kids who we might not be able to do that for. So I have to say, we're grateful.
And while you're on that subject, Ms. Allen and Mr. Lamb, remember when you were, y'all were speaking, you were the guest speakers at Portsmouth for People? One of the questions that came from the audience was about the courses that we're offering are not coordinated with the shipyard. And many of the students who go to the shipyard, take the test, they can't pass it. So I think one of the throwbacks, I think, that evening was, we need to do something about helping students, offering courses that, CTE courses and courses that will help them be able to pass the test. Am I, am I correct, because that was one of the questions.
You asked.
We just need to work on.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Newsome, you got all that good stuff, right? All right. Next item on the agenda is the discussion of the annual Title I, Title II grant application. Dr. Bracy?
Yes, Mr. Lamb.
Ms. Hales is here.
Yes.
What's wrong?
Ms. Hales is here with us this evening, and she will present the Title I, Title II grant application at this time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Vice Chairman, well, I need to say, Dr. Bracy, you received in your packets the Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, Title I Part A and Title I Part D. Applications in your packets. What you having, what Dr. Wynn is passing out before you is just a little snippet of an overview of all of the applications. Did you have any questions? I tried to be as specific as I could about any updates or any changes that were made to the applications. I give you a few minutes to review it, and I'll entertain any questions that you may have.
I have one question on page, question four.
Of which application?
The first one. The. It's the original.
Title I?
Title I Part A.
Title VIII. And you talked about the.
Excuse me, which page?
It was page five. You talk about, Title I Program Administrator will collaborate with each school to develop, revise, and implement their family engagement policy. Would you elaborate a little bit more on what that is? Because that's kind of new for.
Okay, the Program Administrator, that would be me.
Yes, ma'am.
What we do, we meet with each elementary Title I principal. And what we do is collaborate with them to create their family engagement policy, as it relates to, it's how they're going to run or implement and activities to increase their parent and family engagement.
So this is parental involvement? So they've just jazzed it up and called it this? Great, they, okay.
It used to be parent and parental involvement. But now it's parent and family engagement.
Gotcha.
So that's the new buzzword under ES.
Well, they have to, they have to change that. Okay. Oh, Ms. Akerson?
For Title I reduction, for the new ESSA requirements, reduction of exclusionary discipline practices?
Yes.
Could you elaborate on that?
Well, under ESSA, what we had to do was provide for how we're going to exclude students from being disciplined or suspended. And so we had to, I worked with the Office of Youth Risk to create some action steps for how we were going to reduce the number of suspensions. And of course, our goal, we want to make sure that students stay in school. So we're going to be working closely with the Office of Youth Risk to implement our, and make sure that our schools are practicing PBIS with fidelity.
And just to follow up, when you say PBIS, is it going to be some different thing, things as far as PBIS? Because when I, when I think of PBIS now, it's more so given like behavioral stickers and things like that, is it going to be?
Well, I think the problem is that we think that PBIS is just discipline.
Right.
So they are instructional practices that go with the VTSS, it's not just deterring discipline. They are instructional practices that we want the schools to get out of the mindset that they think PBIS is just discipline.
And we have restorative justice practices.
One of the questions we had earlier in our finance meeting with the application, because I asked the question, and I used to ask it all the time, is that the amount of carryover, because you have until September thirtieth. So I've asked Ms. Dorst to, I want to know how much carryover we're going to have for next year. The other thing is that we found out that, and a report I'd like for the board members, is that each school is allocated a certain amount of Title I funds. We want to make sure that those funds are being spent. Now, if they're not being spent, then we need to get on those schools and say, why not? Because if they're not spending it, then don't give it to them.
Well, that's not an option.
I understand it's not, but you need to put some stress on, it needs, I mean, that money needs to be spent.
Right, and so we have, what we've done is created a checklist throughout the school year, where I work with a grants manager. And so I know, I hope everyone is familiar with how the schools get their money. It's based on their free and reduced lunch population. So some schools get more money than others. And so you have schools that get more money than others, so for the schools that get a lot of money, it is a little bit harder to spend. We've added the instructional assistants, we've included the coaches, we've included the interventionists, the liaison, so that takes a chunk of money.
Personnel.
Personnel. And then the rest of the money is allocated for instruction, professional development, parent and family engagement. A parent and family engagement comes straight off of the top. So that's something that we have, every school has to get. So we try to make sure that by now, so we, we're writing this particular grant for July one.
Right.
So that schools have until September twenty eighteen, twenty twenty, to spend this particular amount of money. So by a certain time, we have to have spent eighty-five percent of that money. And so the grants manager, each month, we get, not each month, but periodically, we get reports from finance. This is how much money you have allocated. Make sure that you have spending plans in place to make sure those schools are spending their money.
And we, we reviewed that this evening. It was interesting, about five of the schools that really needed, that they have significant amount of money left in that account. So we just really need to make sure that those schools are coming up with some creative ways to spend this federal money.
Well, what we've done this year for, for those schools is that we've added the instructional assistance to take up a big chunk of what they have left to spend.
Gotcha.
So we added those instructional assistance. Yes, right.
Board members, Reverend Patel.
Also, I just wanted to point out that I just wanted to commend Ms. Hales on the job she's doing. I think we're the only locality in Hampton Rosa that has pretty much a one-man Title I department, or one one.
True that.
Be careful, Evan.
And so she's doing a great job to be able to keep up. All of our schools, Title I itself, are one elementary school, so that's a big task. And she was giving kudos by the Title I coordinator in Virginia Beach, actually. She said she was very impressed with it and how she's able to handle all of those programs.
It was a big task, but it just helps to love what you do, so I love my job. And of course, you know, I love, you know, I've been in Portsmouth for a long time, and so this position, it challenges me daily, because as you can see, all of the, all of that we've been tasked to do, and outside of myself and my assistant, it's just us. So, you know, we have a good support system, so we do our best. And I thank you for your kudos.
And all of our, all of our elementary schools, except Churchill Elementary. And all of our, all of our elementary schools except Churchland Elementary are school-wide, school-wide programs, which means you can offer the services to all the students.
Yes.
And she not only manages Title I and Title II, but we also have Title III, which encompasses our English speakers of other languages.
Right.
And we now have a Title IV part that we have to write a grant for. You know, I can't say enough good about Ms. Hales because when she stepped into this position, she knew zero. And she has organized the office and taken us to a whole different level and made sure that we are being fiscally responsible, but also making sure that we're following the laws behind these grants.
Correct.
And that's, you know, we're not, we're not, we're not supplanting, we are supplanting, what is it?
We're not supplanting.
We're not supplanting.
Not.
We don't want to go to jail.
We're not supplanting.
We're supplementing. And so she makes...
That's why your maintenance department has to come in. You have to...
And that's a big part of it. So our grants are looking really good.
Good.
And we got kudos from the state, so.
Good. All right.
Yeah.
All right. Ms. Akerson?
I just want to say as a part of that, it, the use of restorative justice practices will be used with both students and adults. So we are moving towards that. And just with the, with the 20-minute character education building and time, what is that going to entail?
I'll ask Dr. Winn to speak to that practice as well as Dr. Sandlin to piggyback on that part of it.
We just want to make sure that our students are building up with their character education. And so we're trying to designate at least 20 minutes of their daily, daily time to talk about special words, special characters. It's all built into the PBIS framework. And so even with the restorative practices, we're starting to develop the Tier Two training so that our teachers and staff members can take part in that and be able to hold those circles, to be able to talk about the root of the cause of things that are taking place within our schools.
And thank you, Dr. Sandlin. And to follow up, the community service opportunities, are we partnering with different programs? Or how are we referring the students to the community service opportunities?
We have a steering committee, which includes the Department of Social Services, the Behavioral Health Services. So our steering committee meets quarterly, and we discuss ways that they can assist us, whether it be social services or the behavior part of it. So we're, we have the partnership that we have to develop with them.
And I noticed the, because this has always been one of my pet peeves, is indirect cost. 3%. They, right off the top, they, well, that's $168,000 that really comes to us to pay for administrative costs. So how are we using, I know it, years past when I did, it was accounting and some other things that we used indirect cost. But it looks like that, it seems like that indirect cost percentage fluctuates every year depending on...
I think it depends on, you know, at the allocation.
Yeah, it does. Yeah. But that's $168,000 that...
That's a part of our general...
It is. It is. Any other questions?
No.
All right. Moving on. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the cheat sheet.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. Wow.
Yes.
All right. The next item is the discussion of the Code of Student Conduct 2018-19. Dr. Bracy?
All right, sir. And Dr. Sandlin is here.
Board members, Dr. Bracy and all others. Tonight, we have before you, I believe you have been uploading your board, the latest revisions to the Code of Conduct for 2018 and on. There were limited changes that occurred. If you take a look at your walkthrough, I'm going to guide you through that just for a little bit. Crosswalk, I'm sorry, through your crosswalk. And basically, it just starts with the cover change, just removing the year, falling down to the director just talking about these proposed changes in terms of titles and positions. If you look at page 11, which just talks about the insertion of the new calendar for the school year. The major changes are coming from the level offenses on pages 21, 24, 28, and 32, whereas there is a new Senate deal that was passed which excludes students in grades K through three from being suspended for the minor infractions. They can be suspended or expelled for reasons such as drug offenses or firearm offenses and certain criminal acts. However, preschool through grades three are being excluded. So the highlights were made within those specific pages, 21, 24, 28, and 32. The next set of essential changes had to do with pages 63, which has to do with the health and health services. There are changes in terms of the 24-hour medication, and then the insertion of the light policy, which is page 64 and 65. The last changes just have to do with, again, the titles and positions of student attendance.
Board members, do you have any questions? Besides?
Thank you. Not necessarily about the student code of conduct, however, because we are the board that sees different discipline cases come between, you know, to us. Is there a way, is there a place where we track, I hate to use the word track because it has such a bad connotation in education, where we document what we've done with a student before they get to a Level Four, Level Five, before they come here? You know, how, how do we know that if I have a student that has, you know, three or four Level One offenses, how do I know what, what some of the pieces are that happen? Did we have a parent-teacher conference? Where is that documented, and where can I see that? So that as the, you know, hopefully as the behavior decreases because of these interventions. But if they don't decrease, so that when we move from second to third grade, we're not starting back with parent-teacher conferences, which were obviously maybe ineffective in K1 or two. So what is our documenting policy when it comes to students and their long-term behavior, rather than when I sit here and see a case in front of me, I just have the Power School that has ISS, that has suspension, that has whatever? Where are my other mediation pieces before we get to the, the heavy hitters that show up in Power School? How are we documenting that?
The main thing that we do use is Power School, but they use positive referrals that are on the school level, keeping up with those things that the students are doing. They call them in and have discussions and talk with them, and it's a, it's a building system.
Okay.
So they have it within the buildings, and it's system-wide.
Okay. So part of what happens with PBIS, and this goes back to the discussion we were having earlier with the tiered systems of support, what we are recognizing through these hearings is that we need to train our staff more with the intervention piece.
Right.
And so helping them understand that when a student gets 10 referrals, you know, are we asking ourselves these questions? It is documented in the student folder, but it's also a leadership and a counseling piece that we will be working with our principals and assistant principals to recognize that and identify that.
Do we have a learning management system that could document?
We have what's called the SWISS program.
The what?
SWISS. It's a school-wide information data system. We recently purchased it for all of our schools.
Oh, okay.
And the, a person and a team have completed the training for each school. And so we've implemented it, I think it was early January. They're starting to keep up with their own real-time data to see what things are happening, where they're happening, whether they're in the classroom, whether they're in the hallways, what times of day, what type of student that's experiencing the type of difficulty. So they're able to look at their data more closely to see what's going on, and how can we better handle the situations within their school.
Well, and the reason I ask is because in my full-time job, we have a database that I log into, and I can see any of my active students. Now, I can't go back and see students that I no longer teach, but there's a, there's a piece in that database that has all the interventions and all the parent contacts. And so if I log in for, say, you know, a student named Sarah, and I see that three other teachers have called home, and, you know, the, the number was not working, or that, you know, nothing really changed because then they had to turn around and do another conference, then I know that that's not a way to go. And how else can I, how else can I work with this student and this parent, especially at high school, when you're dealing with juniors and seniors that are graduation, you know, that whole on-time piece? So it just gives me an insight as to what the child's doing in other, in other classes with other teachers, what other teachers are doing. And if those teachers are finding success with that, then I can go and piggyback with them. But as many students as that we have that are transient within the year, my concern is how does that information move with the student so that it is a place where it can all come together and, and you have, you know, basically, it's updated every 24 hours?
Right. And that's what we're looking towards with the SWISS system.
And that's being implemented this school year?
Yes.
So when we have a case that comes before the board, we might be seeing some of those interventions. Because I think the board members have asked for that over and over, because all we get is the Power, Power School. We just see the, all the bad, I hate to say it, all the discipline things, but no interventions. And that's kind of a...
And it's new, so we're relatively...
Sure.
Everybody has been trained on it, but we're trying to get it up and on.
Right. And it takes time. You've got, you've got to enter that information.
Right.
Okay. Mr. Lamb?
Yeah. And piggybacking off what Sarah's saying or, and asking, I think usually I would hope that before a student, before we ever see them, or before there is a long-term suspension, I would like to think that district-wide, there's probably some standard interventions that are put in place. For example, a parent phone call home, a behavior, a behavior plan between the student and administration. I mean, so can you speak to, like, what are some of those interventions that we use across the district?
Right. And right in your code of conduct, where we have the reference to pages 21 and 22, I've listed some of those exclusionary practices that are there. So we're suggesting some of those things to actually do for the kids before they get to actually suspending those children.
To start.
So that listing that's there, those are some of the things that we practice right now. Most kids, before they get to you, they have gone through some, many of those things, unless it's like a firearm, a weapon of some sort. So those things bring you directly here. But in most cases, all these things are being put into play.
That's already, okay.
Yes.
And PBIS is being implemented across, and everybody's been trained?
Yes. And what we want to share with you, I believe it will probably be during the retreat, is the actual final data.
Good.
It will actually indicate how our schools are doing. Most schools are now moving at 80% for Tier One, so they're ready to begin with the Tier Two and Tier Three specific training interventions.
Reverend Patel, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Your, Dr. Bracy. Will we be, are we able to vote on this before BDOE gives their recommendations on the actual bills that were passed, Senate bills? Because when we had our VSBA meeting a couple weeks ago, the Secretary of Education was there, and he was stating that BDOE is now meeting to define what aggravating circumstances are.
Right.
So I guess without knowing that, will we be able to vote on this?
Well, the 20, our meeting is on the 21st, so if that hasn't been, I guess Dr. Bracy will inform the board.
Right. Or will we vote on it and then wait to see what it passes down?
Then we make the adjustments according to what they decide on.
Right. All right. Okay. What'd you say?
No, Dr. Sandlin wanted to say something.
You want to say, I'm sorry?
I'm okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. Board members, any other questions?
No.
Thank you very much, Dr. Sandlin. I know this is a lot of work.
Thank you.
It is.
Great job with it.
Yes, you did. Thank you. The next item is the resolution authorizing design, this discussion, design and construction of a new middle school. Dr. Bracy?
Yes, sir. You have for discussion, you see the resolution in your packet, and this is what we want to bring forward to get approved. As you all know, the, the city has already allocated the funds for the new school, with the first year being for the design phase. And we've had meetings taking place where we've been in discussion as far as getting the ball rolling with the new school. But we, you as a board, have not officially approved it to move forward. So this is the first step of discussion to get things started so that we can go ahead and work with the city and do the necessary things that we need to do to get the process moving. So the resolution is there. I think you have it. So if there are any questions regarding that, let us know. It's just really simple and to the point.
Because it'll be on the 21st. Yes.
I know we're voting on just the, the general construction or approval.
Yes.
Right.
When are we going to have the location conversation?
The, have, I think the...
The city has identified a location, but has not communicated it to me in any official manner. Is it okay to share? I guess it's okay to share. Yeah. The location that's been shared with me is adjacent to Willet Hall with possible deconstruction of Willet Hall to add additional space. I believe there was a height, I think that's where Manor was.
Little hut, man. Hut, man.
Manor's Noel Wilson.
I should have known that, because I taught summer school in that one year. But that's, that's the location that the city has identified for us right now.
Is that an entry question?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
I was going to ask, do we need to be so specific in here to say alleviate overcrowding at Churchland Middle School? Is there any way that we can just take that out and just say that we need a comprehensive grade six through eight, and that the city of Portsmouth has made construction funds? Do we need to be that specific that we're, I, I don't want it to sound like we're, it's very, there's more than Churchland Middle that goes into this discussion and that has been a part of the, the creation of a new middle school. And I just, I think it's just, it's too specific in that. But that's just my opinion.
And I think that...
No, I, I was going to say, I think it should be in there because I had someone call me and say, why are we building a new Churchland Middle? They thought we were building, tearing that down and building.
Yeah, that's right.
So I think, you know, because of overcrowding, I think, because the public, you can never give them too much information. Otherwise, they start asking, like I get the calls. So I think it's a good idea to have it in.
Right. Bracy?
And when we looked, when we're looking at it from six through eight, we know that there's going to be overcrowding because the initial conversation we had last year this time was looking at modulators.
Right.
And that, I think that would have brought about 12 to 13 modulators there if we're going to the six-eight concept. So that's why that statement was in there, because if we did a conversion, Churchland would be the school that would have the most issues with the overcrowding.
Okay.
And remember, this got, this got jump-started when they, City Council did the tour of Churchland Middle that kind of came back. And of course, the facility study plus the tour in Churchland, and they saw for themselves Churchland Middle Schools. So, yes.
With the location, I just, I just hope that when we get into the rezoning conversation, that the shift of the middle school is not to send the downtown kids to Crow Dock Middle School and resend the overcrowding of the Churchland students to the newer school. So I just hope that that wouldn't be the case with the new middle school and their projected location, because there's plenty of land downtown, this downtown area. So I'm wondering why that location was proposed.
In our discussion that, that we had initially with the mayor and city manager, that's really what, maybe one of two locations that they have as far as the type of land and space that we would need for a middle school. But to answer your question, we will make sure that, and we won't do it, you know, there will be a firm that will come in and look at the geographic locations when you start talking about rezoning for the, for the middle school. There'll be a number of things that'll be taken into consideration when you start looking at attendance lines.
Right.
So, yeah, all that will be addressed.
Okay.
Dr. Puttaker, and then Mr. Lamb, did you?
Where was the other location?
Where was the other location?
Uh, the Pines.
The Pines.
Oh, the Pines.
Those were the only two that were shared with us.
My, uh, just with the, the Willet Hall area? I know that there's, there have been issues with water under that land, so I don't, I don't know if they're going to do some type of engineering study or something.
It is. As a matter of fact, um-
We met yesterday, and very early in the timeline, the next step after an architect is chosen is to do a site survey and to do core drilling and soil analysis, because water is a problem in there.
Yeah. That did come up. So all that's part of the process.
Right. Mr. Lamb, then Ms. Backson.
Yeah. And just piggybacking on a couple of questions that has been brought up, as far as, you know, we're talking about that we're going to have a firm do rezoning study or a growth study in the cities. When, when exactly are we going to, when exactly are we going to do that? And then secondly, I don't have the numbers in front, and it's okay if you have to get back with, but exactly how much per cap, capacity of each of the middle schools right now, can each middle school hold maximum? So it's two-
I did that.
Yeah, we-
I know we, but I'm just-
I don't remember.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, but we looked at that.
He gave it to us.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the board.
Okay.
It's in the board.
Right.
Yeah, I just don't know it often.
Yeah, I just-
It was the one we did at Craddock last year.
Yes.
Because we were in Craddock's library, so that was May.
Right.
May's meeting, so we'll go back and look at minutes.
Go back and look. Ms. Backson, and then Reverend Patel.
So with the, with the location, I guess we don't have no say on the location. The city is going to tell us, hey, this is where your, this school is going to go?
For the most part, because they're the ones that would have to purchase it if needed.
And in their CIP budget, the first year it's going to be seventeen and a half million.
Right.
Then the next year it's seventeen and a half million. So it's in their, it's in their CIP budget. Reverend Patel?
The kind of least what I was going to ask, so we're not leading our own school construction project?
We, we are leading the, the construction as far as what it will look like, the design of it. Mr. Ziegler, that was, that was today that Bill Cram was here.
Yeah.
You said yesterday, yeah, that, that-
I'm sorry.
That threw me off.
It's been a long meeting.
Yeah, I thought it was, I thought it was today. But, but we did, we talked, we talked about that. Did you all discuss that in your session?
We did. Well, we met yesterday with the city purchasing agent, our purchasing manager, myself, and Bill Cram, who was from MBCon who did our building study. And their contract was extended to help us with this initial consultation. And the city will be facilitating the purchase, but the design, the scope, the philosophy of the school, all of that will be left up to the school division. And we work with them on other projects, roofing projects that come out of the city CIP. We're unique in that the school division doesn't have a separate capital improvement budget or plan. We have a plan, but the city is the one who allocates and funds it. Because they hold on to the funds for those, those purchases go through their purchasing office. But at that level, at the implementation level, they don't have much interest in being in charge of design, or philosophy, or what type of classrooms we have. Their, their interest is in making sure that we get a quality product, and that it's run efficiently and smoothly. So the school board and committees that Dr. Bracy sets up will have those type of decisions and make those type of decisions.
And so along with that, so is the entire, I guess, not the entire cabinet, but is at least, I feel like, PIO and finance involved with the conversations also?
They will be. We haven't got, we haven't even got to that, that point yet as far as design and any of that. We haven't even got there as far as naming those committees, because I think this was maybe the first or second meeting we've had since the city has approved it. So in my conversation, when, when they finished the meeting today with, with Mr. Cram, who's with MBCon, it was, we were talking about that, because he was talking about, what is your vision? What type of school are you looking at? Are you looking at more of a traditional?
Right.
Are you trying to be progressive? So those are the type of conversations that we had, because I told him that, you know, these are the type of people that I won't involve on that committee. You know, you won't IT be involved in it. You won't instructional technology as well, as well as Dean with the hardware, Dr. Nguyen, well, Brittany as far as what she, I don't think she would have much to do with that, but Mr. Thomas has been involved with that from her department with procurement and all. So the different departments, Sharice will be in there, because of course, we're going to have to be communicating where we are and what we're doing up until this point, so it can be open. We're going to have forums for the, for the community.
I just want to make sure that whatever message we have to communicate is done effectively. And also, we need the school. I'm leery only because I want to make sure this doesn't affect our regular financing at the beginning of every budget year, that this won't be a cause to say, hey, we have to cut this, or, hey, we can't do this because we're financing this school. And that's why I want to make sure that we are ahead of the game as far as messages that are portrayed out to the community, into the public, and also to make sure our financing is not affected by what they have proposed to build for us.
Right. And it, and it shouldn't, because this is strictly in CIP, so it shouldn't cross over into the operating, into the general, into our general budget. So, but yeah, everybody will, will be involved, I'm sure, have a Mr. Parent knows it, if it's the operations committee, that will be part of the-
I'm concerned more about the staff.
Oh, yeah. But yeah, we will, yeah. That's, oh, that's going to be done, but we haven't even got to that point yet.
Okay.
But we will.
In previous years, when we've built schools, new schools, you have a steering committee that is made up of people within the school division. Then you have teachers on it, you have parents on it, you have all of the people, and then you've got instruction, you've got classroom, how the class, in other words, you're going to have a dream team. What, and that's what, when we met with the mayor and the city manager, that, I don't think their envision and our envision that evening was, I hope this, I hope you're not going to build just a standard block school.
Right.
That this is going to be a, a out-of-the-box school.
Innovative school.
That's going to be very innovative for Portsmouth, and we're all for that. But to answer your question, Reverend Patel, we're going to, we're going to be involved in every part of the building. They're just going to be financing it. They got to go out to the bond, and they've got to borrow the money for us to build. But we're doing, as Dr. Bracy said, we're, we're in charge of building that school, design how we want it to look like. Yes, ma'am?
So our, our staff, Portsmouth Public School staff, is handling the invitation to bids, the RFPs, all of that will come through us to vote on the contracting?
No. Mr. Thomas, you want to address what we've discussed as far as that goes?
Uh, yeah. The pyramid, Portionell will be held by the city. The architecture farm and the construction of the building, all of it.
So the, when the architects and the design teams from said contractors come and do presentations, we will have to be invited to those presentations by city council to see what the design is being presented, the present, the, the design presentations won't be made to us?
No, we have, we have, in, in those sessions, we have, there's a certain amount of seats that you have on those committees. And we, I think he told me, we have five of those seats that we will have for the design phase of it. So we will, we will be there. It's, the city is, is the procurement, they're doing that portion of it. We're there, we're going to be the ones who determine who the architecture will be.
So our five is the majority?
Yes. Well, yeah, our five is the majority.
Okay.
Yeah. It's, it's going to be us and the construction management that's going to be working with us, the same company, MBCon.
I mean, because I understand they're paying for it, but it is our decision. It is our school.
It's ours.
It is.
And, and up, and up, until this point, I haven't heard them, or they haven't said anything that would allude that they are trying to take the project, the lead on the project.
They're just the financial lead on the project.
That's it.
The bottom line is that the architectural part of it, they're not going to come in and say, the school board, this is what you're going to do. It's going to be the other way around.
Okay.
And we're going to tell the architect-
Right.
-firm, this is what we want. That's the way it's going to work.
Right now, we do have another large project going on with the city, that the city is financing, and our, the security grant that they gave us, $1 million. And they have not, they've offered assistance, but they have not said, that's not a good way to spend your money, we think you should go this way. They have not questioned any purchase orders that we've put in, they funded them quickly. The Raptor system, Mr. Ammons told me today that the purchase order is going out for that and ready to come in for the next phase. He asked me about radios and radio stations. So we're moving forward without a glitch, and I don't anticipate that this other process will be different.
I know we're all a little leery.
Oh, yeah.
I know we are.
This is a school.
We've got to trust the process.
Right.
Because we don't have the money, it's not in our pocketbook.
Right.
Okay. All right. Moving on, ma'am?
I said, any more questions? Do we have to vote?
No, we vote next, on the 21st. We're discussing, we're discussing, and it's on the 21st that we vote.
Okay.
Okay? Any more discussion before we move on? All right. Now, you have a copy of the June 21st. Dr. Bracy, you want to review that agenda?
If they need.
Do you need Dr. Bracy to review? You'll see all the items. One thing I, I looked on the 21st, Mr. Ziegler, is that, I want to make, I want to make sure that the pay and classification plan, I, I mean, I don't want to get it three or four days before, because I want to go, I-
The plan is to have it uploaded tomorrow, Mr. Chamber.
You've got that?
Yeah. Well, our deadline to Ms. Chamberless is tomorrow.
10 o'clock.
At 10 o'clock, and I'm not sure what, when she uploads it after that, but it's usually the same day.
Usually about 12:30.
Now, I saw that under the, under the contracts, the contracts, we didn't do paper, we, we sent it electronically.
Yes, and this is the second year we've done that.
Well, I didn't know that, that's great. We didn't, everything's paperless, which is great. So what, what did the teacher, in other words, I, I got my contract, so on my computer, I signed, I signed it.
So you'll, you'll recall, the board has a, an existing policy that predates me coming here, that said electronic signatures were the same as paper signature.
Right.
So the employee will check a box that says, I acknowledge I am signing this document.
Right.
And then they type their full name into the field and press enter, and that serves legally and practically as their signature.
Well, everything I can do now at Horizon, everything I do is-
In the past, we would have weeks where we would be trying to-
Well, I know.
... these documents from employees.
That was crazy.
When I checked today, they went out Friday and Monday, some of them, we were about 80% in most employee categories. If it follows last year's trend, bus drivers are our first ones to get to reach 100%.
Good.
Food service workers, we have supports in place for all of, all of our employee groups to be able to sign the document electronically.
And the deadline for getting their contract is when?
Is Friday.
Oh, so we-
Tomorrow, Friday?
I mean, they, they can go longer if they ask for, but most-
In other words-
-by Friday.
School division superintendents have had a gentleman's agreement that, in other words, they, if another person, if a person signed their contract-
Yes, sir.
And they went to another, then the superintendent normally had a gentleman's-
That's June 28th.
June 28th, okay. All right. That's still in effect.
Yes, sir.
All right. Ms. Ellen?
On the agenda for our next meeting, what, what is consideration of the election list, 2018, 19?
That, Gerald.
Three, 10.5.
Yeah. The election list, every year, by code of Virginia, the school board has to, in effect, rehire the existing employees.
Okay.
And that's done through the election list.
Okay.
Right. That means you have to read through all the names.
I got you.
And then if you, if somebody on there that you don't want to vote for, then-
Well, we vote on the list. We don't vote on each individual person, do we?
Yes, you vote on the list.
You, you vote on the list, but in years past, there've been a couple of people that-
Thousand people.
Yeah.
You know what he's saying, if you don't want to vote for someone, they're going to be out of the bag.
In previous years, there've been a couple of board members that, there are names on the list that they would not vote for. So-
Okay.
That was an issue. You have the right to, I guess, abstain, because you're not voting for those people. Yes?
Is it, is it too late to get the, the three associate degree students and the, to the meeting, and the welding students, Dr. Bracy?
Hmm, unless we can-
Because I know it's the end, I know they're out of school, not sure if they're going to work or college. Is it, you think it's too late?
You might, you might have a better chance at the three.
Than the welding?
Than the, that class, because they're out.
Right.
They're gone.
And they're working.
Right. But we can, we can try to reach out to the, the three that-
And you want to just recognize them?
Yes.
Okay.
While we're on the June 21st-
Oh, 21st.
Yes. While we're on the June 21st agenda, we, we've received a call from Gina Patterson. She is going around the state, working with school boards, and she has asked to come and meet with us. And Dr. Bracy and I, and I spoke this afternoon, that the best time, I think, would be at our retreat, which is August the 5th at 6:00.
Something like that.
It would be Friday night, Saturday, that we would ask her to come, and only on that Friday evening, remember, we have dinner, and then we have the SOLs report, that we would ask her to come Friday evening. And what she plans to do is, is not an in-service like she's already done, we, we don't need that, that's not what she's doing.
Okay.
She's updating on policies and procedures, and things that we need to know as, new things that are happening with school boards and policies and, she's just updating boards. And I think it would be a great idea to have her come, but I think it would be good to have her come that evening, Friday, and, and do that, and then we'll have the SOLs. Now, what I need from you, all of you, is to begin to send me items that you would like to see on the agenda, so that we can begin to put the agenda together, okay?
Okay.
Okay? All right. So you have no objections for her coming? So Dr. Bracy, would you mind calling her tomorrow and let her know?
I'll answer that.
Great. All right. Moving on. Roll call vote, consideration and approval of a two-year extension of the superintendent's employment contract, along with other non-compensation related adjustments, beginning July 1, 2018, running through June 30, 2022. You got a copy of that?
Second.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Ma'am?
I'd like to make an alternate motion.
Oh.
I would like to postpone this vote until October or November after we've had a retreat, after we've done superintendent evaluation, after we've had a time to evaluate this year. I understand that he cannot have more than a four-year contract. However, that contract can start anytime within those four years and his contract would still be good until June 30, 2022 at this point. So I would like to make an alternate motion to table this vote until a later date, maybe November, December.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
My motion still stands.
Yes, it does. So you're actually a min, we're a min, we're not a min.
It's a motion to table the motion.
Right. All right. A motion's been made and second to table. Everybody understand that? All right. Clerk?
I want to, I want to think for a minute whether it's really to table because I think you have to take it off the table in 30 days, next month.
Yeah, that, I don't think...
I think it's to defer.
Okay.
She said to October.
I know. I'm trying to make sure that the form is correct for this. I think you can defer consideration on the motion for an indefinite period. I don't think tabling is quite the proper motion. So I would say that the motion, well-phrased, would be a motion to defer consideration on the superintendent's contract until...
Did you hear that?
Then that motion would be voted on.
It's a motion to defer.
To defer.
Superintendent's.
The motion would be to defer the superintendent's contract to no later than December 30, 2018.
I would suggest a specific date.
November's board meeting.
November's formal board.
Mm-hmm.
Now, it's November?
Mm-hmm. If I have to have a specific date, whatever that date, whatever our called meeting is in November. Usually the 20, 21.
We only have one meeting in November because we...
We got to vote on that, right?
Yep.
I'm sorry, sir.
Vote on who?
No, the first vote would be on the vote to table. I meant to, I'm sorry, to defer.
Right. And then the original.
And if, if that vote passes, then defer. If it fails, move back to the main motion.
All right. Madam Clerk, does anybody?
I just want to be clear. We're voting on the first thing first.
Yes.
The first thing, no, we're voting on the last motion first.
To defer.
Right. Okay.
Defer the superintendent's contract until November 18. Would you say 18?
Eight, something to mean.
Eight, 2018. All right, that's the motion.
Yep.
And it's been seconded. All right, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen?
You're voting on to defer, all right? Madam Clerk?
Ms. Allen? Yes. Ms. Ackerson?
No.
Reverend Fleming?
No.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patel?
No.
Dr. Whitaker?
No.
Mrs. Williams?
No.
Mr. Parent?
No.
A motion to defer.
Six yes, three no's.
You should announce the motion to defer fails.
Yeah, now, the, the motion to defer fails.
Right, six...
Now we go back to the...
Now we go back to the original motion.
Three yes.
Three yes, six no's.
Now, do you want me to read the, consideration of the approval of the two-year extension of the superintendent's contract along with not, not July 1 through June 30, 2020?
Has been made and seconded.
It's been made and seconded.
2022.
2022.
Ackerson.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Allen?
No.
Ms. Ackerson?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
No.
Mr. Lamb?
No.
Reverend Patel?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Six yes, three no's if it passes.
Okay. All right. The next item is board members' reports. Do we have board members that like to get reports?
Wish everyone a happy graduation.
Yes. We're going to see each other all day Saturday.
Yes.
I won't be there, but I'm going to be great.
So we got breakfast at, we got breakfast at 8:30, we got lunch, and then we're going to have snacks.
Absolutely.
Lunch and snacks.
You'll be well fed.
We're going to have lunch and then we go... You're going to eat all day long.
I'm not complaining.
I, um, for graduation, I just want to say I will be there for the first one.
Yes.
Um, but my full-time job has graduation at 12:30.
Oh, absolutely.
Across the river. So to not be rude and leave in the middle of a school's graduation, I'll be there for the first and then I will miss the second two.
Just to hand, how many of you are you going to be, how many of you are going to be at all three graduations?
I'm saying yes, 10 to 11.
Very good. All right, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk. Do you have any last minute? We got our, um...
Sir, there, there are two...
We got our parking passes.
Two quick modifications to the email that I sent. First off, 3 o'clock graduation is Churchland, not Wilson again. That was in there on my part. And then secondly, the 3 o'clock graduation is Churchland. It's, it's Wilson at 9:00, Norcom at noon, Churchland at 3:00. Accidentally put Wilson at 9:00 and 3:00, which is impossible.
Oh, okay.
The second thing is the parking, where we'll have reserved spaces for school board members, is the 45th Street Garage. If you're heading in off of Hampton Boulevard, you'll see the 43rd Street Garage adjacent to the McDonald's, Constance Center, and then the 45th Street Garage is where you're going to park. And there'll be someone there with reserved spots for you all.
And somebody will be out there showing...
Yes, yes. Should be on the ground level.
All right.
Right.
Going to be great.
Also, I think we need to thank, uh, Dr. Pramati. Dr. Pramati?
Yes, ma'am.
We want to thank you because you helped us, informed every step of the way.
Ma'am.
And gave us very clear instructions on what we need to do. So thank you for going over and doing all of that.
We are going to livestream graduation on our YouTube channel. Dean, I, I went and picked up my iPad yesterday and Dean and I got into the conversation. So for those people that can't be here, for those...
They can watch it.
They can watch it at home. So check out either our PPS page or our PPS YouTube channel.
Do our parents know about that, Ms. Newsom?
Yeah.
Do they know that? Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Adjourn, motion to adjourn.